We were very fortunate because it happened on a Friday. It was some water and damage in there, you know, some of the rain. I mean, that's not what we're saying. No, we didn't do anything. We haven't had any luck getting anybody to fix it. There's nobody down there because he's got to do a job. So far, we have Tortorisco and Toney. And he's going to look at it, but I think he's going to have to get some help.
Do we have a new requirement?
It's not the boiler, it's the pipe. Yeah, the boiler is great. It just hit no. They had pipes.
All our pipes are good.
Good evening and welcome to this evening's meeting. Today is Tuesday, January the 18th, 2022. The time is now 6:00 P. M. The regular meeting of the City Council, City of Trinidad, when I can order, would you please rise for the allegiance? Ms. Ogletree, would you please, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
There was no hurrah. Just an observation.
Have a roll call, please.
Debono?
Here.
Grago?
Here.
Ogletree?
Here.
Shu?
Here.
Thurman?
Here.
Williamson?
Here.
Rico?
Here. First item on here is we have a proclamation for a school choice week, January 23rd, 2029, 2022. In the office of the mayor of Trinidad, Colorado, proclamation, School Choice Week, January 23rd through the 29th, 2022. Whereas, all children in Trinidad should have access to the highest quality education possible. And whereas, the city of Trinidad recognizes the important role that an effective education plays in preparing all students to be successful adults. And whereas, quality education is critically important to the economic vitality of Trinidad. And whereas, Trinidad is home to a multitude of high-quality traditional public schools, public magnet schools, public charter schools and non-public schools from which parents can choose for their children. With exceptional teaching professionals who are committed to educating our children. And whereas, educational variety may not only helps to diversify our economy, but also enhances the vibrancy of our community. And whereas, School Choice Week is celebrated across the country by millions of students, parents, educators, schools and organizations to raise awareness of the need for effective educational options that challenge and motivate all our students to succeed. Now therefore, I Philip D. Rico, Mayor of the City of Trinidad, Colorado, on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby proclaim January 23rd through the 29th, 2022, as School Choice Week in the city and call upon the public to recognize the value of many educational opportunities in our communities. The witness where I bear and to set my hand and cause the seal of the city to be affixed. Mayor Philip D. Rico dated January the 18th, 2022. Item number two, pro the agenda. Council have any changes to the agenda? Entertained a motion?
So.
Second?
Second.
Call vote, please.
Debono?
Yes.
Grago?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item three, policy item or staff reports. Mr. Valentine, you have any to remember? Thank you. Item four, petitions or communications are all written. Do you have anybody signed up?
We do not.
Okay, thank you. Item five, consent agenda approval. Item 5A, approval of regular meeting minutes of January the 4th, 2022. Item B, approval of bills in the amount of $1,480,023.67. Item C, approval of payroll, January the 8th, 2022, through January 21st, 2022. Actually, there's some minor, there's actually three payroll periods. 12/25/21 to 12/31/21, an amount of $188,532.93. 12/25/31 to 12/31/21, an amount of $247,745.86. Third item is 12/25/31 through 1/7/22, in the amount of $436,278.79. Entertained a motion for to promote the consent agenda?
So.
Second?
Call vote.
Debono?
Yes.
Grago?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item six, public hearing, City Council acting in its capacity as the Board of Appeals. Item 6A, hearing is now open. Appeal of decision of Planning, Zoning and Variance Commission filed by Southland and Alderman Group, LLC, variance application, 2021, variance 16, for five residential lots of 204, 208, 216, 312 and 321. On Indaba Street, the applicant is seeking variance to allow a 312 pitch on these structures. Mr. Downs?
Mayor, council members, thank you. It is my understanding, first of all, is Francisco Argüeta here? Thank you, sir. And also, Robert Land is online. You can see Mr. Land as counsel. It is my understanding that Mr. Argüeta recently retained Mr. Land and it is their request that this be, that this matter be continued until the February 1st, council? Please. And that the hearing will not be closed, but it will be continued, please, Mayor.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion for continuance to February 1st?
I move for a motion that continues to February 1st for the quasi judicial hearing.
Okay, second?
Second.
Call vote.
Debono?
Yes.
Grago?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item seven, unfinished business. Consideration of a streets of a re-subdivision, a subdivision preliminary lot of a portion of Trinidad Industrial Park, first and second filings being located in the southeast quarter, and section 30 and east half section 31, both at township 31, south range 63 west. Twelve lots, 1 through 12, and six tracks, tracks A through F, and sunlit lane right of way. Entertained a motion? Second?
Second.
Discussion, Sky?
This is a major subdivision, the first part of a major subdivision out in the industrial park. The platted land consists of about 146 acres. It's going to be used for an outdoor marijuana grow. They're subdividing into 12 lots. The first, two of the lots are re-subdivision. Their existing lots that have greenhouses on them and the property lines have been moved. And then some of the land is unplatted at this point, so that's going to be newly platted. The project also involves about 1.3 miles of new road construction, which will be sunlit lane that will be dedicated as a public road once it is complete and goes through a two-year warranty period. The applicant has been working on this for some time. The project includes a 50-foot emergency access easement on the west side of the property from El Moro to Republic Drive. Republic Drive is right in the center of this larger parcel. And a utility easement will be dedicated on the west side of the property for a water line which will be laid along the sunlit lane, looping around the property in a utility easement. Gas will also be brought along sunlit lane to the end of the property where the line will pass under the railroad tracks and connect to the grid. The applicant will, the city will be installing the gas line at our own expense. Part of this is because the applicant is not planning to use the gas and it brings the city closer to a long-term goal of tying in our gas grid with the Aguirre and Wausenberg gas line, which will help make the industrial park more stable when we have heavy users such as the asphalt plant. Right now, we have a drop in pressure and when we can tie that all together, it'll make the pressure more stable under heavy use. And so the applicant has agreed to allow the city to come in and lay those, lay those gas lines. The different city departments have submitted comments and reviewed the preliminary application and there has been no contest on any of the requests made by the city from the.
Okay, before I turn it over to the rest of the City Council, there was a minor change from the original items that came from planning and zoning about the 425 trees. I guess that has been taken off the table, is that correct?
So that is my understanding. Perhaps Mr. Downs can speak to that. Originally, at the planning and zoning meeting, we looked at the landscape requirements in our code. The landscape requirements have, would have required 1,200 trees to be planted on this, on this parcel. Planning and zoning said that they thought a third of that would be a good number for planting. And the city isn't really interested in those trees in the right-of-way. And they, and this particular piece of code hasn't been applied or enforced with other similar applicants in industrial zones. And so it's only the, it was staff recommendation to use a C-GOT-approved seed mix on the earthworks along the road to prevent erosion, but not to include the tree requirement. And then Mr. Downs spoke with each of the members of the commission and asked them where they were at with that. And I believe each of them agreed that they did not intend to.
Require that?
Require that.
Yes, that's correct.
Going forward.
I didn't mean to interrupt you, sir.
No, no, that, that, you can go with the down. Perhaps you can speak to that.
Thank you, and that's absolutely correct, Mayor. It was a sticking point for the, for the applicant and I did call, there was one commission member that I was not able to get a hold of. I'm sorry, their name escapes me, but I got a hold of all of them and they all, I mean, I'll accept the one, and they all agreed that they would forego the tree requirement. This is a proposed outdoor cultivation. There isn't even going to be a building at this point. And there was really no need for the trees. And I should say also, I'm sorry, I should let you know that Mr. Jim Thornburg, correct?
I was going to ask him to come up in a bit.
Yeah, absolutely, I just wanted to let you know he's here. He's legal counsel for the applicant and I just wanted to make sure you knew he was here. It is correct that they're willing to forego the requirement for any trees in this, this application.
Mr. Thornburg, you want to come forward, please?
Certainly.
Thank you, counsel. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Jim Thornburg, Land Use Counsel for the applicant.
Okay, give us a little bit of information. If you have anything in addition to what has been discussed so far, then we'll get questions from council if there's any.
Certainly, Mr. Tallman, I think I said, I said it out pretty well, what they're looking for in general terms. There's been a lot of work, vote. I know that the applicant's very excited about getting this moving forward and increasing their presence within the community. If there's any questions, I'd be glad. That answer to the best of my ability. I can't say that I have full knowledge of everything, but I'll certainly try for it.
Okay, start with Ms. Devon.
Yes, you said there, right now you have an outdoor cultivation planned right now?
Yes, sir.
In the future, will there be an establishment or a covered premise?
I, other than what's already on the premises, I don't think that there's, there are current plans for, for more greenhouse.
Okay. Ms. Rico?
I have no questions.
Mr. Shu?
Well, just for Mikey, you said you had to put a road in. Are we responsible for that? I mean, they're going to put a section of the road in?
They will. Build the road, put in the water lines and then turn them over to the city and yes, we will.
We'll pave it, okay.
Yeah, I just. Yep.
Are you still planning to do the payment of a fee-in lieu of an open space kind of?
I think that's what's being considered at this point, rather than trying to dedicate open space. I think that's still under discussion. I think, I believe that's the direction that they're going to go.
Thanks, Mr. downs.
I just had a question actually for Mr. Valentine. Mike, the, the city is installing the, the gas lines. Is that something that we, we will do as city, city workers or is that going to be?
That'll be the, the city staff will install it.
Oh, okay.
We're asking that the contractor dig the trench, reinstall the line and then they backfill. It's for future. We're missing out on a lot of customers out there because of the pressure, but here we're going to have a road built. And we don't want to go in there and tear it up after the fact.
Right, okay. I have, I have no further questions.
And actually, that's a good idea with a gas line because, I'm not going to get into position on this particular item, but Sky mentioned that, you know, we've been discussing for the last couple of years being able to tie the gas line into the Wausenberg area, so that's a discussion for a different day. My question is, is that road going to be paved and whose responsibility is that?
It, it will be paved. It'll have curb gutter, storm drainage. It's got a two-year guarantee, warranty on it and then it will be the city's responsibility. It's like any other subdivision. We ask the developer to put up the farms, the payment bonds to do the work and to finish it, then it reverts to the city.
Okay, and how, how long is that work going to be?
It's about 1.3.
Yeah, it's 1.3 miles or just over 6,000.
Estimate the cost to pave that?
Uh.
At this point?
I don't know if we have.
There's just over $7 million.
Wow.
For the whole construction project.
For the water line, the paving, the curb gutter. That's on the developer and then they, they turn it over to the city. Similar to Cooper Canyon where they built all those, that infrastructure, it's $90.
Is that a single-layered pavement going to be or double?
I don't know what the geotech report was, but I think it, I want to say it's, I don't want to misspeak here, Mayor, but I think it's like eight inches of road base and then six inches of asphalt. It's not, it's not just two inches. It's, it's per the, the geotechnical report for that soil out there.
Okay. So it's not just a chip seal?
No, no.
And this question might be for Mr. Downs, had a discussion with him today. Those are page on negative impacts and it says that CUPs, the CUP needs to be updated. What does that process mean? What's the reason behind that?
Sky, do you want to field that if the CUP needs to be updated? Please, sir.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council. Two of the lots where marijuana is currently being cultivated, these are the indoor, well, I guess there's indoor and outdoor on those lots. The CUP is attached to the property description and so the property description is going to change when, when those lot lines are redrawn. And so we're going to have to update and renew the CUPs with the updated property description when the subdivision goes through. So this is going to trigger, it's not going to be a change in use or a change in conditions. It's going to be a change in the legal description that the CUPs describe.
There, and there is no problem with having to update that CUP?
That's correct. That's correct.
Just want to make sure it doesn't.
Yes, sir.
Involve anything, get us into trouble later on.
Right.
Those are the questions that I have. Mr. Thornburg, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns from council? Call vote, please.
Debono?
Yes.
Grago?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item eight, miscellaneous business. Item 8A, first reading of an ordinance making a 10-foot wide, 142-foot long, forcing a Rosita Street right-of-way, Lot 1, Lot 14, Santa Fe Railroad North addition of the city of Trinidad, Los Angeles County, Colorado. City in a hearing date for consideration of said ordinance to February 1st, 2022 at 6:00 P. M. Need someone to introduce? I'll introduce. Need a motion?
We'll make a motion.
Okay, second?
Second.
Discussion, Sky? And Mr. Gabelson, you might as well come on up, too.
Don't be taking a nap back there.
Although I was surprised at how quickly we got to the end of the agenda.
Well, you were hurrying to get out of here, so.
Anyway, just give us a little bit of additional information if you have any.
Absolutely, so approximately eight months ago, we purchased the, what was formerly known as the Amato Lumber Yard. And at, just before closing, we learned when we got the survey that about approximately 10 feet of the, of the building itself was built into the right-of-way. And, and we applied shortly thereafter. Actually, we, we worked with Gary Terry to get the survey that you see in front of you and applied shortly thereafter.
Got a question later on, but, okay. Sky, you have anything?
As far as the applicant is concerned, it's a pretty straightforward situation. The building has been in its place for about, what, 90 years or so in what is technically the road, technically the right-of-way. The, the, right-of-way along the Rosita Street abutting the building does not have a sidewalk and so we were having an internal discussion that I think has yet to reach a full conclusion about how to address that sort of gap in the pedestrian network there and, and what, what, what we would negotiate with, with the applicant. And so that, that's, that was one thing that came up in our internal discussion. Not really, not really reached a conclusion on that. Otherwise, this is a fairly straightforward adjustment of a lot.
Let's get some questions from council, if there's any. Mr. Debono?
No, Mr. Mayor, I don't have one.
So I'm looking at the photo of the land that we're going to be. Is there any utility easements in that?
Oh, there's no utility easements or utilities to the best of my knowledge. It's literally underneath the building.
So that's the main building to the west of Rosita, right?
It is, it's the, it's the, what was their retail operation? Yes, I can.
No, I see there's holes on there, but I, no, I got them. I just wanted to make sure.
No, no questions.
I had more of a question for Mr. Tallman, which is that if we don't make it part of our negotiations now, what, what leverage would we have to ask for a sidewalk down the road?
We'll volunteer to do a sidewalk. We don't even need to negotiate. We'll, we'll put a sidewalk in.
Thank you.
Worries.
No, I was just waiting to hear about the sidewalk, actually. What is the pedestrian traffic like in that area?
It's limited, but I will say, you know what, office is, is right there and looks out on that window and I will honestly say that when I see people working, walking up Rosita, they're walking in the street. Yep. Not issue, we will voluntarily put in a sidewalk. I have no questions.
And I, with that, and I guess that was part of my question in looking at the diagram here. And, you know, the building was placed in the right-of-way and I guess there's a little red line and I guess that's the area that shows the sidewalk, the proposed sidewalk, is that correct?
Mine isn't colored, but it fits on our map, red line is, is.
Excuse me, it's a yellow line, sorry about that.
Well, I guess it, yeah, it's probably the edge of the, the actual lot. That shows the building where it's, right.
I did, I did have one.
Sure.
Question. It's been a minute since I've been over there. There, there won't be any issues with, there'll be plenty of sidewalk space to get around those poles for ADA, right?
I don't think that's an issue whatsoever. I know that there is kind of an open irrigation. Open drainage trench on that side. Well, we may have to. We're a construction company, we can figure it out. We'll work with city staff and make sure it is ADA compliant and meets their standards.
Okay. Any other questions? Call the vote, please.
Debono?
Yes.
Grago?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes, so you want to first?
Thank you.
Okay. Item 8B, approval of scope and cost for the 4160 voc breaker and controls and synchronizing project tasks 4 through 10. Cost submitted by New Frontier Engineering Company in amount of $178,605. Before we get started, I was a little confused with that dollar amount because in, in the, the total costs for completion, it showed $540,000, Mr. Valentine.
So allow me to try and explain this. So if you recall, Power Light, Utility Director at the time, Dean Duran, presented this to council and that you approved it for the 4160 breaker. We initially, at the onset, did an engineer's estimate of what we, you know, what we thought was going to be done there. Overall, all-in budget was $331,000. We brought forth, you know, we went out to RFP for engineering services. Council approved New Frontier to move forward. Their initial cost, before they got into the, the actual cabinets and breakers and everything, was $110,000 for engineering. They came down, they, they were here all last week. They got into all the 1960s electrical gear and panels and, and everything and, and after that, they said we need to do a little more than anticipated. In the meantime, we had a major windstorm in our 138 breaker, one of the 138 breakers that wasn't in the scope of the project, actually tripped so many times that it, it tore the, the weld on the breaker coil itself. So it separated. There's no, there's no welding that back together, so we had to actually ask them to include that in our scope so we could move forward with that. The, the old enterprise engines that are, that have been in there forever, we've been having trouble syncing those onto our system while everything else is running and every time we try and sync them, it shuts everything down. We, those are the emergency generators. We have the CAT diesel engines that we kick on when we lose, you know, San Isobal connection or power. We're able to fire up those emergency generators. As the load, we're trying to carry the whole town and as the load gets bigger, those three generators can't carry the town. We try and fire up the old enterprise engines and it kicks everything off. So they, and everything is manual from back then and a lot of the safety mechanisms that are built in have failed. So we wanted to get those synced back in so that we can, you know, better serve the public. So with all that said, they, their engineering services, all these, the 138 breaker replacement is new. The generator control upgrades is new. The relay control panel procurement, fabrication and installation to do this work is new. That's a, that's a big ticket item, that's about $126,000. And then the units 5 through 7, those are the settings. And then the units five through seven, those are the settings of the, the ARPA engines. So all in engineering costs now would be a change order to, to, rather than a hundred and ten, it's another additional one hundred and seventy-eight thousand. It is work that has to be done. It's work that we didn't realize as they got into it. So the, the initial three hundred and thirty-one, they said after engineering costs, they anticipate their engineer's estimate to be five hundred and forty thousand to get all the breakers and everything installed and bring the contractors in. So.
Okay, let's go and get a motion on this, please. Motion? Motion?
Motion.
Motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
One second.
Go ahead, if you have anything in addition?
No, Mayor. The, like I said, the, the engineers were here all last week and they're, you know, looking to move forward with your approval.
Okay. Mr. DeBono?
No, I was just gonna ask Mike, in the event the city is in the year of a new substation, new, new frontier engineering, they would be able to design one, right? Because they're already doing a lot of that groundwork.
That is, that is true.
That'd be a possibility.
Mr. Creggo?
Will this estimate change because of the price of the equipment going up? And the reason I ask that is for some reason or other, I was talking to Mr. Duran and we were talking about the supply chain and everything that's going on. And he said he, he ordered one piece of equipment and by the, by the time he completed the, the order, it went up like twenty thousand dollars.
I think, I, I don't know which he stopped, I think it was eight thousand dollars. It was a transformer.
Yeah.
He got approval to, to go forward, got the purchase order. We have agreements with developers where they sign an agreement, pay for it upfront, and we rebate the cost back as they use power. Well, at that, that, between that time and week and a half, that price jumped up.
Yeah, so that's how fast.
That's how fast it's going. The, the engineer is going to help us spec up everything we need, help us through our procurement procedure. Yeah, the supply chain and everything that's happening in the world, I have no control. So there, there's a very good possibility that five forty might go up some.
I have no further questions.
No, Mike, I know that's, our plan needs a lot of work, so there's probably going to find out a lot more problems, be more sober with because of that. But is that the total cost with the breaker and everything that's listed here, the five forty?
The five forty is engineering, breaker, procurement, all the, all the materials, and then a contractor to do the installation.
Yeah, do we have money to cover that in the budget for the Power Light, or do we have to?
This money is coming actually out of the marijuana cultivation fund that, you know, the twenty-five dollars per pound is to use for utility infrastructure. We're going to be using that.
Mr. Valentine, will this address all of the breaker issues that we have? Is this?
Guarantee? I'd love to say yes.
It will address all the forty-one sixty breakers and the ties to our generators. The thirteen-eight was, is a newer breaker that, that it just slammed and busted the wells. We have three, three other of those breakers and, and a spare that we're using now. Power Light took it off that broken breaker and tied it over, so.
So we're making significant progress?
We are, we are toward upgrading and.
And making things more reliable, okay.
How long, how long was this, well, how long have these breakers been not working properly?
The forty-one sixty breakers have had issues for quite some time. And if you recall, Mr. Duran brought that up at the retreat, that this keeps them up at night, so.
That's what I was asking.
Yeah, so.
Are we past, past due?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Williamson?
I have no additional questions.
Few questions I have, Mr. Valentine is, the request in your show is for one hundred and seventy-eight, six oh five, rather than the forty. Is there a reason why it's not for the five forty at this point?
The five forty is an engineer's estimate for the overall. So this is just for the engineering, the, the additional money for engineering. We're, we're gonna have to go out and purchase the breakers. We'll see what that cost comes in. We're gonna go out simultaneously with R F P for contractors to do the installation. We'll see how that bid comes in. The, the estimate is for the overall, that, that five forty is the estimate for completion, materials, labor, install, put everything online and make sure everything is working properly.
No, I was, I was concerned if, the soil analysis cost, it's six thousand dollars.
So if you were to go out, so that, that's initially, the thirteen-eight breaker was put in, again, it's sixty-seventies. If you go out there and look at the foundation, this breaker is not, you know, your little, this breaker is a huge old cabinet with metal, you know, it supports and everything. And it's sitting on what appears to be little slabs of hand-poured concrete. We don't know, we're gonna have to investigate that to see if when we put the new breaker on there, if it'll hold it up. So that's the soils analysis. It's an estimate. We're gonna have to get in there and dig up next to it. We can't, you know, set a drill rig in there to do geotech analysis, so we're gonna have to do some hand digging around those.
So that'll be in there for cost.
It could be.
Now, the other thing I saw in there is this item's not included in the scope. Temporary power during installation, is that gonna be an additional cost to bring in other?
Actually, no. The mine crew along with Mr. Duran figured out a way to set a pole and, and actually throw some switches in there to bypass that, keep power live. There're gonna be a little bit of an outage as they do that. But then, once we do that, they'll be, the contractor will come in and work and get everything set before they go live. So that discussion was had and that's, that's on us. So they're, they're just making that.
Yeah, the other item in here that is gonna be an additional cost, it says about a single-phase regulator. It was not included in that scope.
Didn't think about the single-phase regulator.
You were incredible, this is. I will, you might check into that and see if it could.
What that cost might?
So the regulator is for, I believe that's for the, the old enterprise engines. The silverstead regulator are configured more differently than modern equipment, so as we modernize, it may or may not need replacement. But if it, if it does need replacement, it's not included in this.
Frank, you worked out there, you have any idea of any of this?
I don't know the cost you don't have.
No, no. Any additional information?
No, the only thing I would think is that on that forty-one sixty breakers, there are, I think we have three of them across there, Mike, in the.
There's four.
Four, yeah, three or four. And my concern would be why, would it be a wise idea to get an extra breaker for cost for down the future? Because, you know, the other ones have been in there for quite a while. And I know one time we had that blown out and it kind of messed up the whole circuit points.
It will, and they're, we're building redundancy into this design, so I think we should be okay.
So that forty-one sixty breaker, are all of them, there's more than one breaker, you're saying, right? Are all four of them going to be changed?
Yes. The other, last question is, is there an estimated time as to when we're looking at? Because it sounds like, you know, a lot of this stuff could blow through our face any moment. Don't say that. We do have.
Don't say it.
You need more challenge.
ARPA has, has the ability to bring in their, their portable, it, it'll take a little bit to get it here. It's, it's housed in Long Island. We could bring it in and tie it in and we'll be able to, to continue on providing power. But, yeah, it's, it's been a while that these maybe should have been replaced sooner than this. They just gotta start somewhere.
Get an idea as to how long this thing might take.
Right. If we, if we approve tonight, we're hoping to get a P O to start it to order parts February fourth, I think. I'll start the process and, and the engineer is hopeful that we can be done by end of June, July, getting everything going, barring any supply chain issues.
Yeah. Any other questions from council?
I just, I have a quick question, and Mike, this may, this may not be a quick or easy answer, and if so, that's okay, we can discuss offline. But if, if we approve it tonight, why, why does it take to February fourth for an approved P O?
We're approving the engineering. They're, they're working on it now. They're specing everything out. So the, the P O would be for procurement, to start the procurement of parts and pieces so that the supply chain. The P O with the engineering firm, this is a change order to it, and we just.
So the process effectively starts then, but the?
Yeah, tonight, tomorrow, I'll call them and say council approved or not approved. And, and our purchase order is for, I don't think it's in here. I'm sorry, it was in the email from them. It just, it just starts the process.
Okay. Okay, no, no, are there any questions? Call vote, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Creggo?
Yes.
Oboltry?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman? Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Thank you.
Council reports. Mr. DeBono?
Well, nothing to report from the Los Angeles County Veterans Council, but I did interview Dana Crawford and Christopher, excuse me, Smith. They stated that the seat sale campaign is going really well at the time period, and they wanted everyone to know about the virtual forum that's gonna take place tomorrow. Good interview of Dana.
The only report I have is I went to the legislative days and there are other people here, more suited to say what we're not, that we had fair turnout.
Still neither one of my boards met because COVID infections or exposure, so next time.
Nothing to report yet.
And just letting you know, people are, bring up.
Mayor, I have no, the point is, I have two meetings upcoming, but.
Mr. Valentine, this is something that we have a graffiti remover capability. Has the school department been able to contact anybody that has graffiti and say, do you want us to help you remove? I don't know that they have to sign off for labor. Do they do anything?
I, I will check, Mayor, I'll get back to you on it. Yeah, I think it'd be good. Like I said, our legislative roundtable, I think it was pretty good because there was a lot of information, I think the biggest information was the, all the information about the crime from the police department and sheriff's department and the D A and the judge, what they were able to give, share, what they were able to show, I think it was very good. I attended the tourism board meeting and I took all your places. There, there's a copy of the survey that they just recently did, so look it over and see if there's any questions that you guys might have, whatever's down the road, okay? They also were talking about, you know, Main Street banners, and I understand that there's some issue on the banners or something, I'm not sure what's going on. But anyway, there was those, some discussion about banners that are being designed, so that's something that, that was, that came up.
That, that was historic Main Street, too. I think it's a.
Culmination.
Yeah.
I also listened in the other day to the new ALP meeting. Were you on that phone, Mr. Valentine?
I was not available, Mayor.
I thought so. A couple of things is, I guess, right after New Year, of course, they had some COVID issues with some of their employees coming back from wherever they live and kind of put production in a little slow, I guess. So I guess there was some issues. But they are planning on increasing production, I guess, with additional, with additional crew or crew and a half or something down the road. They also talked about the rail installation. They have three bridges that they have to reinforce, that will do some work on. Housing is better from what they're saying, but there's still needing more housing, so the housing issue has kind of gone a little bit better from what they're saying. I attended last night the school district, the school remodel. Kind of nice to see that school getting remodeled and, and a little overdue. Also, I'll just kind of curious, I heard that there was another, I guess, Mr. Tomlin even asked, I guess, is there another survey out?
One of the things that came up at the last planning and zoning commission is that people felt like they needed a little bit more information on attitude specifically about A D Us. Because I didn't really ask that question in the, in the first survey, because it's, it's already in the comprehensive plan, it's already in the code, so I didn't think to ask how people felt. So, so I am gathering a little bit more information just to inform the conversation with planning and zoning.
And just a reminder for, for council, social training on the thirty-first, keep that in mind. And also, earlier, I've been trying to have a state of the city address. And I've checked into it and I thought maybe it'd be a good idea to kind of let things weather over this culmination going on. So I booked that for seventeenth of February, kind of maybe gives the bottom line away, maybe give my kids settled down. I called the college where we typically have it. If, if by chance that there's still a lot of home going around and we have some issues, we might have to do what we did last year, that I did it, you know, here in council, virtually to the community, so I think it would be televised as well, so. But we're planning, planning at six o'clock on the seventeenth, if on Thursday. That was all I have, Mr. Valentine. Thank you, Mayor, members of council. As you may or may not have heard, our electrical superintendent resigned, so we'll be looking for another one. But I just wanna, you know, thank him for thirty-four years of service to the city and we'll, we'll be moving forward. As Mr. DeBono mentioned, the Wendy Wasit Barrett is going to be doing a, a kind of a seminar on our backdrops and everything. Fox is the premier on stage here and the backdrops and everything. We have custom plaster in the Fox right now. They're, they're cleaning up these backdrops and stuff and lowering them so that when you could look at them, she planned on being here, but with all the COVID and, and everything that's going on and back where she is from, I don't remember, you know, in the, anyway, she, she's not, not gonna show up, but virtually, the company she works with, it, custom plaster is in there and they're filming and she's walking through it and it's pretty interesting stuff. It'd be good for this thing and it's, I know there's an online portion from seventy-eighth on Thursday, January twentieth, and you can go to the Fox. And you can go to the foxwesttheater.com, uh, website or Facebook or YouTube to, to just hear about her background and what we have as, in the collection that we have at the Fox Theater. So it's.
I think those backdrops are valuable.
Yeah, very much so. And we're trying to protect them and get them out of there while we do the work and clean up and the pigeon droppings and years and years of just dust. So it's, it's, uh, it started off. Also wanted to let council know that, uh, Debbie Wagner, I wrote her a letter, allowing her to subcontract as part of her agreement. She had to have city's permission. Um, I sent council an email. And we're moving forward with Mike Beasley. 5280 strategies. We'll be working with Debbie as we transition. She's already said there's, um, 60 bills and 100 bills dropped now. And it's, so it's like just trying to track everything. Show how, how with, uh, Mr. Beasley, so.
That's all I have. Just mentioning all, uh, now that we're in Debbie, we're going to have a meeting with Mike Beasley. Right. Sit down and talk. Mr. Debono?
No report, Mayor, or council. You looked very happy though when, when you mentioned 60 to 80 bills already being introduced.
I thought for the day, she told us 100 bills.
Right.
Probably more, another 100 or something.
Oh, yeah.
Was there like 500, I think, last?
Yeah.
And they usually shop the last 2, 300 in the last month.
That's right. That's right. 2, 300 in. Thank you.
Okay, anything else in council? What's your Twitter? So, second? Call roll.
Debono?
Yes.
Corrego?
Yes.
Oboltry?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Okay.
How about Mike Valentine, people? I guess this guy will be.